Case on our docket tonight is case number 1805, 119 Salem Street. I'm gonna go ahead and read the notice into the record and handle a couple of preliminaries. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing in the selectmen's meeting room at Town Hall, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, on Wednesday, May 16, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. on the application of MBA Building Group pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, for a special permit under Reading's zoning bylaw, Section 7.2, to demolish the existing three-family dwelling and construct a new two-family dwelling on the property located at 119 Salem Street, Reading, Massachusetts. Unless there's an objection, I'll dispense with the reading of the abutists list, except to say that the abutists were notified, as were the appropriate boards and commissions in town, in departments, members and associate members of the zoning board of appeals, as well as the planning boards of the surrounding communities. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath, so if you think you may want to speak on this case, even if you're a member of the public, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn. That includes the applicant. I swear the testimony given me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, the response as I do.
I do, I do.
Okay. We'll let the applicant have a floor.
Great. For the record, my name's Jack Sullivan. I'm owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group. The owner could not be here tonight, but the builder from MBA, Keith Berlisi, is here to answer any questions you might have. But I thought I'd kick off the night and give the board an overview of what's looking to be done here. Properties of 119 Salem Street, as the chairman stated, it's an existing three-family dwelling. They're proposing to raise the three-family dwelling and construct a two-family townhouse style dwelling. The property, the existing home was built in 1920. It's on the list of historic homes in the town of Reading. MBA worked with the historical commission in coming up with the design for this house. It was under demolition delay. It's been released now from the demolition delay. But they tried to incorporate a lot of design features that the historical commission was looking for in the architecture and the look of this dwelling. The lot itself is in the S-15 zoning district. The lot consists of 17,031 square feet. The minimum requirement for the S-15 district is 15,000 square feet. The lot frontage for this lot is 96.5 feet. Now, the requirement is 100 feet in this district. As far as other zoning aspects, as far as the front side and rear setbacks, the proposed structure meets all those. The minimum requirement is 20 feet. We have 21.7 on the front. The minimum side is 15. We have 16.5 at the closest point. And the minimum rear setback is 20. We have a little over 92 feet to the rear setback. The maximum lot coverage in the zoning district is 25 percent, with the buildings, decks and front porches where it's 17.3. To go over the site plan, what we tried to do in this design is the proposed two-family, we tried to locate the building in a similar location as the existing building. The driveway that comes in on the right side of the property will be still utilizing that driveway on the right side. And to try to reduce the look of pavement out front, the driveway will go out back and there'll be two-car garages under on the rear of this property. So that allows additional green space in the front. Part of meeting with the historical commission was we wanted to show landscape features in the front, green space. We showed plantings. Another thing is, right now, the existing foundation is a fieldstone foundation. To the left of unit one, long unit number one, we're gonna reuse some of that granite in the retaining wall, so that it is manageable. I believe it's pretty straightforward, especially where we're going from a three-family to a two-family. Keith is here. If there's questions on the architecture, but basically each unit will be a three-bedroom unit. Each unit will be about 2,200 square feet. The existing three-family is just a shade under 2,800 square feet. The town records have it as 2,727 square feet. At this time, I'll turn it over to the board for any questions they might have.
Great. Thanks, Jack. What we'll do next is open up the matter to board comments, questions, discussion, and then we'll open up to public comment, see if there are any members of the public that would like to speak, and then we'll go from there. So we'll start with Nick.
I have a question for the board, based on the table of uses, if we were even allowed to grant a special permit for something like this.
I have the same concern. I don't know, I wasn't able to see from the property record how far back the three-family use went. Does the applicant know?
We had records from the building inspector in the 80s that it was a three-family.
We have a letter from the previous building inspector. Yeah. That it was a three-family. And I left out my head, but that was from the late 80s, saying that it was a certified three-family. And it's been used as a three-family all the way up to probably beginning of this year.
And I do have, I do have the assessor field card. It shows number of living units, three. But we're looking to reduce it to two, and even under the general bylaw, it, when this house was built in 1920, there's something in there. If you have more than eight available rooms, it can be converted to a two-family. This says 11 rooms. And if we're making, if it is a three-family, we're making it two, it's less dense than that's there, so it's been, it's been done by this board before.
The instances where it's, where it's been done is where the, the existing use was legal and conversion was granted based upon meeting those, those factors. So we wanna, I think, keep in mind as we go through this, the use of the property as it exists today. The way I, the way I look at it, I think, is any use of this property is non-conforming because of the lot size and the, and the lack of frontage. So it's already a non-conforming lot in terms of size and frontage for an S-15 district.
It's only non, chairman, it's only non-conforming in relation to lot frontage.
Oh, frontage, sorry. Okay, frontage. So, so with regard to frontage, it's still a non-conforming lot in that regard. So I'll, you know, I'll leave it up to board discussion. I mean, I'm not the sole arbiter, but, but Nick does bring up a valid point for discussion, I think, as we go through this. Anything, anything else while we keep that on our, on our radar screen?
That's it.
Okay. Robert?
Yeah. Looking at the property and looking at it, my thoughts on this were that it's a legal non-conforming lot in that it, it was just, the frontage was just 100 feet, I think we've gone through that. In its use, I consider myself to be grandfathered non-conforming. Number one, three-family, we've heard tonight, it's possibly been since the 80s at some point. I guess it's been for a certain period of time, I believe it's 10 years. It becomes, I don't know if the right word is legal, but...
Accepted.
An accepted use. That's a good word. And they are looking to downsize it to a two-family instead of a three-family. I like the idea that, I did know, I was not aware that it was registered with the historical commission.
Yeah, nothing, nothing in there that mentioned.
Nothing. But I do like the idea that they did go and discuss it with them and on that, and I think they, I don't know if they have their blessing, but they certainly are aware of what's happening.
The demo delays expired, so they've had their say.
Right. I, I don't believe, you know, it's substantially gonna be more detrimental than the existing use to the neighborhood with a two-family as opposed to a three-family.
When you're applying 7.2 to that, in part of that analysis, yeah.
Right. And they're, they're not changing any curb cuts to the driveway or anything like that. So the only question I had, and I didn't see it in the plans, the builder maybe can answer it, was the height of the building. Obviously, we have a maximum height in town of 35 feet. I did not see in the elevations what the height it's gonna be on this building.
It's gonna be under 30. I believe it's 28 and a half, but if you can kind of look on the set of plans, probably I'll let for you in a second.
Yeah. Obviously, 28 and a half, substantially.
Yeah, it's gonna be substantially under 35. Yeah, above 27 and, yeah, just under 28 feet.
28 feet. And this, yeah, this is, will be above the elevation, the sidewalk elevation or the ground elevation at the, at the foundation. It sounds, it sounds like you're, you're...
I mean, we took the four, I think that's including doing the four corners and averaging them out to make sure that we're within 35.
Okay, right, right. Okay. That was about it. Keep in mind, we do have a memo from the building inspector. You want to read it in?
Yeah, we'll read it in before we go to public comment. John?
On the assessor's card, on the first page of the assessor's card, down to the lower right-hand corner, does indicate notes that it was a historical.
Okay.
So I did make a call today, and Kim was able to answer it, and the same thing here with Kristen. That has expired by about a week, so we were all set on that issue. I did have a couple of questions, though. First, I guess on the architectural drawings or whatever, I did notice that, and maybe since I don't see a full set of plans in it, this is, do not take these for construction purposes. I noticed that the, the left and right corners, which is the roof in the, in the front portion of the house, extends well out over the porch area. And if you look at the one in the rear, which is on, it was A 2.0, it appears that the, the roof area extends beyond the limits, substantially beyond the limits of the actual structure of the house. And I couldn't see it on the diagram where this was being fit in, but my guess would be that if you exceed the dimensions on the certified plot plan, that the building inspector will certainly tell you to correct that, so that there is no overhang beyond the limits if you have it posted on the certified plot plan. So that was one question I had. I don't know if you, you had it, Jack, on that, or...
Typically, the roof overhang does, does not count in your setback. It's the actual, so if there's a roof rake of eight or 12 inches, that's, under the, under the zoning, it's not included in the setback?
I kind of disagree with you there, Jack. I think the building inspector's always said that the roof overhang does apply in the back.
If it's a roof rake, I did not, because when I do foundation as-built, I locate a foundation, and when I do the final as-built, the roof rake doesn't exist. It bump out for living space accounts.
That, oh, sorry. Well, I'm, I'm...
We can check.
I'm not too worried about it.
We're gonna defer to the building inspector.
Building inspector's gonna...
I was just gonna say, that roof rake's not gonna come out past that porch area, so that porch area's plotted on the front here, so it wouldn't come over that, that overhang wouldn't come out over the, that front setback.
Okay. The other, which has been brought up by the other two members of the board, I think I saw also in the assessor's card here, or pages of the card, that it was a two-family through 1986, and then somehow it became a three-family. Don't know how, don't know where. But I mean, certainly, if the historical commission has given their blessing to remove the, remove the property, or remove the house on the property, it meets the requirements of the other criteria of the zoning bylaws. And then the last thing I had was the request for a special permit under Section 7.2. 7.2, just reading the first sentence, or the first half of the sentence, "Nonconforming single or two-family use is located in business or industrial districts." This is neither business nor industrial, so I think we're doing a little bit of a stretch here in terms of accepting it under 7.2 as it stands right now. So I'll just leave it there for now.
Great. Eric?
I think that, I think we can all agree that it's at least a two-family, right? I mean, it seems like from the public records that, you know, I think, at least in my mind, you've overcome the, the multifamily use aspect of it. I think that in all respects, other than the frontage, you're in conformity with the performance standards, and the frontage issue is solved by the legal nonconforming nature of the lot. So I don't really have any objections to what you're looking to do or anything else to add.
All right. Thanks. My, my, well, before I give you my thoughts, let's give you the building inspector's slots. We have a memo that I'll read into the record from Glenn Redman, the building inspector dated yesterday, May 15, for tonight's hearing, regarding case 1805, 119 Salem Street. "This proposal is to demolish an existing nonconforming three-family dwelling and to construct a new two-family dwelling in an S-15 district, in parentheses, 'single family.' This proposal does meet all the current dimensional controls in an S-15 district. I do not have any opposition to a special permit being granted." And then it goes on to quote, to list the, the text of Section 7.2 of the zoning bylaw. My, my thought is, is that relief under 7.2 is, I'm not sure that that's the appropriate section that they're looking for relief under. You're not in an industrial or a, or a business district. You're in a residential S-15 district. In my mind, that defers us back to the table of uses for residential district, the S-15 district. And if that's the case, is a special permit appropriate? Or are we looking for, for a variance from the table of uses in a residential S-15 district? So just to go back to the, bear with me while I find the right page here.
I think it's page six.
Yeah, I got it. So, yeah, my page is outnumbered, so bear with me. All right, here we go. So in the table of uses 532 for residential districts, we're in S-15, two or multifamily dwellings are, are not allowed under the table of uses in those districts. Now, we have the added feature here that this has been essentially an existing, and if we go with, I'm, I'm inclined to go with the board's sentiment that it's been at, at least a two-family since the mid-80s, if we go with the property card. Do we then have to consider that a grandfathered use, even though it's not allowed in the district? And at that point, are we dealing with a 7.32 analysis, where it's an existing nonconforming use in a residential district rather than 7.2, which is only business and industrial?
I, I kind of disagree, David. I, I think it's just the first paragraph of 7.2 that notes business and industrial districts, and that's put in there because that is a, a case where the building inspector can make the decision in regards to extensions or alterations, et cetera, of a nonconforming single or two-family use in those districts. And then it goes on to say that where a nonconforming nature of a single or two-family use is increased, or where other nonconforming uses are changed or substantially extended, et cetera, et cetera, that use may be reconstructed, altered, go to the zoning board for a special permit. So in other words...
You're carving out the first part of that paragraph only as applying to business and industrial, and the rest of the paragraph...
I'm reading that the first paragraph only applies to, yeah, business and to industrial. And that is put in there because they intended that the building inspector then could make that decision in those two particular zones. Other zones, they would have to go to the Board of Appeals for a decision. That's, that's the way I'm reading it.
And my query is, I don't know that we've, I don't know that we've consistently interpreted it that way for the board.
Well, and then reading the building inspector's memo, I believe that's the way he interprets it also, or he would make reference to 7.2. He notes that he supports a special permit under 7.2.
I think the rubric that they have of nonconforming uses of 7.2, I think lends itself to the fact that it probably is restricted to business and industrial because it's not permitted there, and clearly, there's no one supposed to be living there. So with the nonconforming uses of 7.2, I, I kind of read it that that is specifically for those districts, and then the nonconforming structures of 7.3 would apply, I think, maybe in this case. That's just my reading.
All right. And so, so we've got a little bit of a difference of opinion there, but, but if we, if we go to Section 7.8 in the zoning bylaw, which discusses voluntary demolition and reconstruction, "Any reconstruction following a voluntary demolition of a nonconforming structure shall meet the following requirements. A single or two-family dwelling that is nonconforming only with respect to lot size and/or frontage may be voluntarily removed or demolished and replaced by a new single or two-family dwelling." So I think, and if I, so if, so follow my logic here. If we, if we opine that 7.2 only applies to business and industrial districts, then I, I don't even know that the applicant needs to be here.
I was just gonna say, if you read 7.8, A, I would say that they were allowed by right to do it.
You actually may be able to do by right, so, except in the event that the reconstruction would cause the structure to exceed the lot coverage, it doesn't, of the original nonconforming building, or cause the, move the original footprint, which I think this does, it moves the original footprint. "The building inspector may issue a building permit if the proposed reconstruction will not extend the nonconformity or create a new nonconformity," which it doesn't. So keep, keeping that in mind.
I would agree with you there.
All right. So, so keeping that in mind, do we want to offer the applicant a chance to either A, continue, or B, withdraw without prejudice and go talk to the building inspector about whether or not you have to be here in the first place? I don't know that we can vote on seven, on your application under 7.2, if our opinion is that that section, and again, we're not 100% in agreement on that, but let's presume for a minute that we are. If the applicable section is not 7.2 of the zoning bylaw, but the applicable, applicable section is 7.8, which I think it is, I mean, that seems pretty clear.
Right.
Let me ask one question, though.
Sure.
Just on 7.8. So it said for a one or two-family, there might be some confusion where Glenn sees it listed as a three-family, and we're going two or two. There's nothing in 7.8 that spells that out, but...
Well, and again, and I agree with you. If you're, if you're presenting this as an existing three-family, then that maybe throws a monkey wrench into your analysis. However, if you're presenting this as the building record and the, the town record, property card, even though it says on your assessor's record, three units.
Right.
The build, the, the building card, the last notation says two. You could perhaps convince the building inspector that you'd like to go with two for purposes of trying to see if you can fit into the, into the format of 7.8, and you might not even need to be here.
Well, another option would be to continue, if you wish, until you had time, come back at the next available time that's open, if you have to come back at all, rather than...
That's what I mean. I mean, you...
I think what we'd like to do is continue so that MBA can talk to Glenn. I don't want to withdraw, just in case he says no...
Those are your options. Right, right, right.
You know, but I know it's an option. So I would suggest, I mean, we have to open up to the public for discussion, too, but our, our sense would be to continue.
All right.
And we can talk to Glenn.
All right. So based upon the board's comments and comments from the applicant, that seems like where this may be headed, unless there's something else that changes either of our minds as we move forward. So I think the best thing to do right now would be to open up to public comment. If there's any member of the public here tonight that would like to speak to this application, you'll be given an opportunity to do so. I ask that you rise, identify yourself by name and address, so our scrivener can know who you are, and we'd be happy to hear you. Going once. Yes, sir?
Hi. Todd Ellis, 123 Salem Street, we're the abutists of the property. First of all, just on behalf of neighbors, we're so happy that some, that some things being done with the property, with development, because as it is now, it's sort of ramshackled, let's say. Couple of questions, though. First thing is, why was there a delay in the demo?
Statutory.
Okay.
The, because it's a historical building.
Right.
The historical commission can exercise their right to delay anything being done with the property, to try to work with the applicant to discuss preservation of historical aspects of the building that the commission finds might be meritorious. They have six months to do that, which ties the developer-owner up for six months while they have a discussion or don't have a discussion. And then once that six-month period is up, the historical commission's jurisdiction, if you will, lapses.
All right. The second question is probably, this could be something offline, but many of the neighbors are wondering about the landscaping of the property. Currently, the property's overgrown, including the trees that are above my property. We're waiting for those to fall on our property. We're assuming those will be removed, so that's probably an offline discussion, obviously.
Yeah, I don't know, does the applicant care?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the, it's gonna be a complete overhaul of the landscape. Be more to come over, discuss about the trees, about trimming the back, or taking them down, whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
All right. That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any other thoughts from the board? Any other thoughts from the board about anything that we've discussed, jurisdiction-wise, what-section-wise, continuance versus a vote?
Well, we're talking really about two issues. One issue is the use of the property now and in the future, and the second issue is the demolition and the rebuild on the property and what it would be in terms of not only use, but its location on the lot and meeting the dimensional controls, which it does. So I mean, there's two issues that involve here, and I think it's very easy to try to, not to confuse, but to intermingle those two options, and I think when the building inspector's looking at this, he's looking to see if this is a possibility of doing something. I just believe that, as I said initially, the 7.2 really is more for, in my opinion, business and industrial districts, which it was addressing. So I think this allows us additional time to, or allows the applicant additional time to go back to the building inspector and see if they can work it out, and maybe he doesn't have to come back before the board.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like that might be a reasonable suggestion, Jack. I mean, you may not even have to come back, but we can continue to the next open meeting, which I think is, well, with the 40B, we want to make sure that we continue it to, when's the-
July 18.
July, okay, so the June meetings are wide open if we want to schedule?
June 20th.
June 20th?
Okay.
Okay, that's the next open meeting? So, continuance to June 20th?
Yes, please.
Okay. We'll take a vote and continue it. Do we have a motion to continue to June 20th?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Right, you continue to June 20th, and maybe we won't even have to see you on June 20th.
And if Keith comes in and talks to Glenn, would Andrew or Kristen be able to-
Yeah.
Relay some of, you know, the sections, 7.2 versus 7.8, some of the discussion we had tonight?
Yeah, I think that makes sense to make your conversation more productive.
Right. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Jack. Thank you. The next case on our agenda tonight is Case 1807, which is 3 Mount Vernon Street. And I'll go ahead and read that notice into the record. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing in the Selectmen's Meeting Room at Town Hall 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Mass. on Wednesday, May 16th, 2018, at 7:00 PM on the application of Timothy Smith pursuant to Mass. General laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, for a special permit under Reading's zoning bylaw, Sections 6.3 and 7.32, to construct a deck with a non-conforming rear yard setback pursuant to MGL, Chapter 48, Section 10, for a variance under the Reading zoning bylaw, Sections 6.3 and 7.4, to exceed the maximum lot coverage permitted on the property located at 3 Mount Vernon Street in Reading, Massachusetts. Unless in objection, I'll dispense with the reading of the abutters list, except to say that the abutters were notified, as were the appropriate boards, committees, commissions, and departments in the town of Reading, members and associate members of the zoning Board of Appeals, and planning boards of the surrounding communities. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath, so anybody, including the applicant or member of the public, that wishes to speak on this application, please stand and raise your right hand. I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, the response as I do.
I do.
I do.
And the floor is yours.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Tim Smith. I'm 3 Mount Vernon. Me and my wife, Renee Sax, we moved into town just approximately two years ago. So we are requesting to put a small deck on the rear of our property. I think you'll see from the map, there's one director abut, and we have essentially a really small lot for a large house in town. So we're a little hamstrung on what we can do out there. Looking at the S-15 zoning regulations, it looks like we're already over the percentage of lot coverage anyway in the existing structure and garage. So what we're attempting to do is, we have, the lot is not flat either, so we've got a pretty good slope on the rear of, down to the garage, rear of the garage on the property. We're looking to put a small deck off the rear of our kitchen alongside the house, so it would be long and thin along the dimensions of the house, as opposed to going out because of the small rear setback. The dimensions are on the map, I believe we're approximately, let's check, 26 feet from the corner of our property to the lot line, and 12, and slightly less than that on the kitchen, which is the entrance to the deck. So we're proposing to go 12 foot 6 and 13.7 feet in respectively on the sides of the deck. Essentially, that's what we're trying to do, and we've gone through the process. We have put a slider on there to naturally go down with three low steps to the deck, and given the slope of the land, we won't be anticipating a railing all the way around the deck because it will come out at much level with the slope of the land, so we need one small step down. If you're willing to answer any other questions, best I can. I'm not the builder, I'm the property owner, so forgive me if I don't understand every, all the terminology here, so we're learning it as we go.
Great, we'll try to help you through that if we can, sir. Your request this evening before the board is for a, one of your requests is for a variance, and we'd like you to speak into the record that the requirements of the law in Massachusetts for granting of a variance are that you must meet four specific criteria, that this board has to make a finding in your favor to grant the variance, and I'd like you to speak on the record, if you would. I mean, we do have your submission, we've reviewed it, but I'd like to hear from you, if at all possible, how you feel your application is supported in those four criteria.
Yeah, I tried to answer the questions to the best of my ability on the four criteria that are listed. I don't believe that, certainly in some terms, detriment to the public's good, I think we'd be improving the look and the, certainly the aspect of the property from anyone who could view it. I don't believe that there would be any detriment to the public good. As it's a deck, I noted that there's really no change to anything structurally, so we don't believe there's any issue there. In terms of substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, we have done some construction work on the house. We are looking to try to improve the lot. This seemed to be the most reasonable way to improve our outside space without spending a fortune on landscaping. The lot is not very level, and to landscape it, or a patio or some other outdoor space for us to use would, we believe, be more financially difficult.
Is the slope due in any way to any existing ledge, or is it just one hill in the back?
It's a hill, I believe. I don't believe there's any ledge.
Okay.
There is a concrete walkway, which would, it's currently there, which will be covered. Yeah, I don't-
Tell me a little bit about the first criteria. Criteria number one, soil conditions, shape, topography affect that land or the structure in question?
Yeah, the current topography is that there's a slope up to Linden Street from the rear of the property. There's one mature tree, a few shrubs along the property line with our director abut. There's a concrete walkway, which is not in the best condition, and would be better gone, and the rest of it is grass. Yep.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
As per our usual practice, we'll, the board may want to have a discussion, certainly have questions and/or comments regarding your application, and we'll start on the other side this time with Eric.
So just one point of clarification, in your variance write-up, you write that the deck would not cover the sloping piece of the property, and I just wanted to just confirm, is it on the portion that's sloping, or is it not? Because it sounds like, at least in your description, that it's not.
It would cover some of the slope, yes.
Okay. All right, I mean, I just, I just-
Meets the slope, yeah.
Yeah, it goes out to the slope, to be honest.
So with the variance, you're probably getting the sense that, you know, it's a challenging threshold to meet.
Right.
And so, right now, you're actually over the allowed 25% coverage, which is why you need the variance in the first place. By adding the tech, we would be increasing that, and one of the things that, one of the first prong is that we need to make a determination that the soil conditions, the shape or topography of the land would necessitate that. So if it's not, if the deck is not going to be where the slope is, it just raises a question in my mind of, do we need to put the deck there because of the slope? And if it's not covering the slope, it sounds like maybe we don't. The next question that, or next prong we have to ask is, is it a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise? And I don't, I mean, I don't know that the, I'm just trying to, so you note that it would add a nice outdoor feature. I don't know that not having a nice outdoor feature rises to the level of financial, of a substantial hardship, and I was just curious if you had an idea, or could maybe just give the board a little insight as to the difference between the cost of the deck versus the cost of the landscaping, and, you know, maybe percentages, you don't have to volunteer dollar figures or anything like that, but how cost-effective it would be?
Do you mean landscaping for the whole property, or just for the back?
I mean, I guess, yeah, I mean, I guess, because it sounds like the reason that you want to do the deck, at least in that area, is owing to the, you know, cost of landscaping in that area, and at least in that area, it seems more cost-effective to do the deck rather than, you know, plantings or grass.
Yeah, we looked into a patio for-
Okay, so it's really a patio, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so-
So the patio, patio, patio is about five to six thousand more-
Okay.
Than the deck.
Okay. All right. So that's for the variance. In terms of the special permit portion of the relief that you've requested, I don't have the rear setbacks for the back corner where the garage is, but I can note that it seems pretty tight there. So I don't think that, at least in the special permit analysis, that extending the deck beyond where it is would be more detrimental than what's, you know, the existing non-conformities that are there, but I do think that, at least with the first two prongs of the variance in my mind, I will defer judgment on those until the rest of the board weighs in, but I think that those are a challenge for your petition. That's all I have there.
Thanks, Eric. John?
I see that the house is built around the 1900s. It doesn't give us an actual date, and certainly it was a very, in 1900, it was not a, there was no zoning. Zoning didn't come in until 1942, but at that time, you know, that was a nice piece of property, it was a corner lot, it was nicely located, I'm sure, at that particular time, and when the house was constructed on that particular lot, that's all they needed, so that's what they built. I see it has had a couple of owners recently, you being one, you being the latest. As Eric very aptly mentioned, you have two hurdles here. Hurdle number one is the tallest of the hurdles. You have to make it over the first hurdle to get to the second hurdle. And the first hurdle is increasing the non-conformity, which is the percent coverage of structures on the property, and you're going up roughly 228 additional square feet, so you're going up substantially over where it stands now. That's the biggest hurdle, and I think, as Eric mentioned too, it's very difficult to look at that because the, Chapter 48 is very specific about meeting the four criteria, and the toughest criteria, believe it or not, to get over is the first criteria. If there was a piece of ledge standing in your way in the back, if there was-
Conservation lane.
That, or maybe there was a large tree that prevented you from utilizing another portion of your property, it would be a condition that certainly could help you over that hurdle. The second hurdle, to me, as I think Eric has mentioned, is not a significant portion of the special permit, at least in my mind. The largest hurdle is the first to get over, and I think by increasing it, it makes it that much more difficult, and not having a substantial set of conditions there makes it even more difficult to get over. So I'll just leave it at that for now.
All right. Thank you, John. All right.
I would agree with Eric and John's summation. I think you have a couple of issues that you have to attack here, first one being the variance on that, and I think that's going to be your most difficult argument on the variance. Increasing an already legal, I guess you could say, non-conforming piece of property in regards to lot coverage, you're looking to increase that coverage up to 34.8%, whereas now it's at 30.9%. And I'm reading the criteria in the variance, I think it's very difficult just to get by the first criteria in regards to your lot conditions or anything as that, and I think the second criteria would also be difficult to argue in regards to a substantial hardship. Something that you would like on your property is nice if you can fit it in, but it's not a necessity on that, and so that's where you have to balance a substantial- And so, that's where you have to balance a substantial hardship versus, well, geez, I would like to do that, it's not a big deal on that. It's really... A deck is not a necessity today. It's nice to have on that. And that's where I think you're going to have issues, is getting through your first step, which is getting the variance as opposed to the special permit. And then getting to the special permit may be not as difficult as John said. You have to meet certain criteria. Already, the house itself, the main structure, is very, very close to the rear property line. And the deck, the proposed deck you have, is somewhat less, though it is within the 20-foot buffer there. So you would have to convince the board in that regard. But I think the variance is your problem.
Thank you, Robert.
Yeah.
You raised your hand. Would you like to speak to that?
I just wanted to... We just wanted to make the area more usable because it's sloped and damp and it's not a very use... It's not a usable outdoor space. So that's all I wanted to say.
No, so you looked into it as a patio, which...
Yeah.
It's going to be more expensive from what you've said.
Yeah.
But if I'm not mistaken, a patio would also not require you to come before the board or require a building permit or anything like that. I think that's a landscaping issue.
If it's an adequate for protection district, you'd have to...
Is it?
If it is.
I don't know.
You'd have to make that determination. You may need to see the town in the mail.
Yeah, I don't see it listed...
Doesn't say.
I'm a plot player.
I don't think it is.
Oh, if it isn't, then that's not a...
Jack's usually pretty good about getting most of it.
Well, that was just my thought, if it was, that would be an additional one hurdle.
But that's... Obviously, you've got an option, so it's going to be more expensive. And maybe that's the only way you could have to go. I don't know.
Thank you, Robert. Nick?
I pretty much echo everything the board has said. You're really asking to build a structure on the back on your home. But not getting this variance doesn't preclude you from still enjoying it, putting a patio or some other landscaping features out there. But I would be interested in knowing exactly why you didn't go with a patio.
Our kitchen is... Do you know how to beat it? It's above ground. I don't know, I don't know, 10 feet, maybe?
Four, five feet.
Sorry, trouble of dimension, four or five feet. So it would have just been a lot of steps down. Did it feel like a long drop to the patio? Whereas a deck just felt more consistent with the architecture, that it was more kitchen level. And it felt more comfortable for our family, for kids running up and down stairs and things like that. So that's... We started with the patio, it was a lot more expensive. We were worried about the moisture back there. It's a very dark, not sunny area. The grass is...
Yeah, it's in the shade of the house, pretty much.
Very damp, so...
I can see that, it's the north side of the house.
It's the north side. And we... So then we moved to looking into a deck, thinking that would be more consistent and comfortable for the architecture of the house. So that's how we came to that. And it was expensive, which helped. But that wasn't our primary reason, it was actually just thought it would look better with that architecture of the house.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Before I chime in, we're going to read Glenn Redmond's memo, again dated today... Yesterday, May 15, 2018, regarding tonight's hearing on the three cases that are before us, specifically with regard to case 1807, 3 Mount Vernon Street. Glenn points out that this proposal is to construct a 12-by-19-foot deck, 12.6 feet from the rear property line. This property is located in an S-15 district. The required rear yard is 20 feet, and a variance from 6.3 is required. Although, we're talking more about lot coverage than we are about...
Again, the mixture of the two.
So I think perhaps it is both because it's... While the building itself is already significantly in the setback, the new addition, if you will, the deck would present a new encroachment, I guess, into the rear yard setback. But I think we can take that in combination with the lot coverage.
Yeah, with the location of the structure, including the garage, where it is so close to both the side and the rear. But I mean, that's something we're probably not going to get to.
No, no, that... No, I think you're right.
More concerned with the lot coverage.
Yeah, I think you're right. So you've heard a lot about, from the board tonight, about variances. And I just want to add a couple of, I think, cogent points. In terms of some legal perspective, in terms of... Nobody likes to be told what they can and can't do with their house. There are laws in Massachusetts with regard to issues that are in... I don't want to call it violation, but in some way encroach into the bylaws of our town. That's what Chapter 48 is there for, that covers avariance. And so, what you're asking the board to do is to use that statutory construct to allow you to break the law. It's not that sinister, I can assure you. And I don't mean to make it sound that sinister because it's not, it's a deck. But the law and the statutory law and the case law that discusses variances, discusses a couple of points that I want to put on the record. And that is, the theoretical use and enjoyment of your lot is not grounds for a variance. The small and, you know, the size of your lot, lot size, an undersized lot is not grounds for a variance. You've... The houses... You managed to fit quite a bit of house on the lot that you have, or people that built the house did. And as such, that's why that first criteria regarding something unique, which is why I was kind of leading you with some questions during your presentation earlier, regarding any unique features. A sloping lot that's due to just natural slope, I'm not sure that I would agree that that meets the criteria. The other thing that the board looks at in terms of making a determination is, is this the only place on that lot that this deck could go? And I think we have to collectively ask ourselves that question. That's the ultimate question that we have to... In going through those first couple of criterias, is the only place that a deck could go? That you could have a deck? Now, it may not make sense to have a deck coming out of the side of the house because there's no reason to have a deck there. You'd have to put a doorway in and have somebody coming out of a bedroom onto that deck. I understand from a utility purpose that that might cause additional costs and expense. But from a shape and topography of the land perspective, what we need to make a determination, what we need to determine and rule on is this the only place on that lot that that deck could go? Now, no matter where you put an additional structure on that lot, you're going to increase the lot coverage further from an already non-conforming lot coverage. And so, I think we, as a board, owed it to you to kind of give you a sense as to where we're coming from when we say that a variance is a very difficult hurdle. And we do grant variances, we have recently. And this seems like a good use of your property, but for the fact that you're hamstrung a little bit by what's already there. And it doesn't really matter necessarily whether we think it's a good use. That's not what the law requires us to do. And we all live in Reading and own homes in Reading too, so we understand where you're coming from. So from that standpoint, I think the board's made some clear indications about where that's likely... Where the board likely is falling in that regard. And so, before I open up to any public comment or questions from the public, I want to give you a couple of ideas and options that you have and what the consequences of the board action might be. The first is, you're here and you filed an application with the board and you have your time before the board tonight. The board is here convened to hear your application. And if you'd like us to vote on your application, that's what we're here to do. You need at least four members to rule in favor of your application for it to pass. Okay? If the board doesn't vote in your favor, that vote goes on the record. You are then barred for two years from doing anything that is substantially the same as this application with your property from the date our decision issues. You may want to take that into consideration. Your second option would be that you think maybe there's a better plan, that you want to go back and think about and come back to this board at another date in the future and revamp your application somehow. That would be called a continuance. That leaves the case open still and continues the time for the board to hear the case to another time where perhaps you might want to come back with something new, different, or otherwise that you think the board... That might be more favorable to you in terms of an application before this board. That's your right as well. If you're concerned with regard to a two-year prohibition from... That would result from a no vote would be, you have the right to withdraw your application. You can withdraw it without prejudice, which means you can always refile it at another time. That means you have to go through the filing process, application posting, maybe even pay another fee process. But it's withdrawn, the board hasn't taken any action on the case, in which case you could still bring it back if you feel like you want us to vote at another time. You just have to go through the process again and reopen it. So those are the options available to you. And I think it's only fair that we provide you with that, with those options so that you know you have as much information as you can to make an informed decision about what's best for you. With that said, I will now open the matter to any public comment. If there are any members in the audience that would like to speak to this application, please rise, make sure you've been sworn. If you haven't, I will again. Identify yourself by name and address, and we'd be happy to hear you. Hearing done, we will close the public comment portion of our hearing tonight. Any more comments by the board members? Go ahead, John.
No. I think I've said what I...
Yeah. Right, okay, thank you, Robert. John?
The only comment that I would add for the petition is is that by... Just going to clarify one of the options in my mind, that by withdrawing without prejudice, you in essence close the book on this particular hearing, but not what you're looking to eventually achieve. It also gives you time to go back to the building inspector and say, hey, look at, what can we do on the property to get some more living space or get some desired outside space that we would like, without going into the structure aspect of it and see what you can come up with? As I think David aptly presented in the board, I think you get the feeling of the board, it's not that we are trying to tell you that you can't do something which is not right at your property. However, Chapter 48 is very specific in maintaining order throughout the Commonwealth. And that's what we have to go by. So a variance is a very specific item and the most difficult of all relief to achieve. So I just throw that out there.
Right. Okay. The next step, I think, would be... I know I've given you precious little time to consider the options that you have. But I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit and ask you which of the options I presented... Well, if you have any questions on the options I presented. And which of the options I presented you, you would like to move forward with?
If you'd like some time?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, if you'd like us to take a break and you'd like to go out in the hall and have a discussion about it...
We'll take a minute.
Yeah, yeah, please, please. We'll take a two-minute break. We'll take a two-minute break and go off the record.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Yeah, we'll go back on the record again. Go ahead. The hearing's back open again. Please do.
Well, how do you educate yourself on the laws of the variances? I mean, I thought we were pretty well-prepared coming in today, but we wouldn't have come in with this if we knew it would be rejected. So I guess I'm wondering where we go... You know, what we need? How do we educate ourselves so we're compliant?
Well...
The inspector?
It never hurts to consult a good lawyer. I'm a lawyer. In all, full disclosure.
And so is Eric.
How do I know I would have, yes?
But I know we had a nice chuckle on the subject because it came from me. But that ultimately, you know, when there are... When... In dealing with a detail such as 48 and a variance, it never hurts to get a legal opinion with regard... And I know, you know, sometimes that might be cost prohibitive and I'm not... You know, that might be one suggestion. Jack Sullivan prepared the plan that you wrote up. I don't know if you consulted with him. Jack's been around the block a time or two. He's very experienced and has, you know, myriad of experience. And whether or not he opined, and perhaps you did, and that's why you were here. But that would also be one. Consulting with town staff is always... They're great resources, you know. While they're not going to tell you what to do, you know, you might ask the, you know, is this going to be even worth my while type questions? Or is there anything else I can do? You know, you've got a wealth of experience behind the counter here in town, you know, from the building inspector to, you know, all staff. They're all very helpful and very knowledgeable that you might be able to go to. And those are a couple that just come off the top of my head. Yeah.
I have to say that the staff here at Reading is very good. They want to help. They certainly will give you their impressions and what has happened before, before not only this board but other boards, whether it's this board or CPDC or Health or Engineering, whatever, maybe the situation. That doesn't mean you have to take their recommendations one way or the other. This still is up to you. But because most... But because most of the people here are, are very good at what they do, it's worth a consideration when you do this. And that's why I suggest to you that if, if you decide to withdraw without prejudice, you go back and talk to staff, especially the building inspector and anybody else who's in community development, and see what, how else you can use your property and maybe get some use out of it. We still haven't taken a vote, so...
It's, you know, it's, it's a little consolation, you know, at this point, but, but, you know, having, you know, having access to those types of resources, you know, is, is important, I think, and, you know, great in this town, so. With that in mind, after you've had a chance to mull it over, I'm sorry, did, did you have any other questions as well? Okay, all right. With that in mind, what can the Board do for you tonight?
Be more lenient?
Well, so, you know, I guess, I guess the point too is, the best case that you can make for yourself with regard to any development in town is to try to put a plan together that works for you so you don't have to be here.
Yeah.
That, you know, you put something together that doesn't require a Board or committee or commission approval because you always take a chance at that point in time that you're leaving a decision with regard to your property up to others. If you, you know, if you do something that maybe is not 100% perfect but gets it done quicker, perhaps cheaper, and without having to submit to this type of an inquisition, you know, you might find yourself better off. I'm sorry. So what would you like us to do?
It's either A, or B, or C. Something in between.
Yeah, no, I know, I heard the be more lenient portion. I, I can appreciate that. I do.
No, we withdraw.
Okay. So you'd like to withdraw the application, I'm guessing without prejudice, we'll do it without prejudice, which means we're, we're, we're closing the case down, but you may come, if you find something that we haven't found whereby you want to reopen the case or bring a new case, this, regarding this specific subject matter, you're not precluded from doing so, you may do that. Okay. With that in mind, we would need to, the applicant has requested withdrawal without prejudice, and we would need a vote of the Board to approve, or vote on the request to withdraw.
Right.
So we need a motion to approve the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice.
So will.
You're welcome. Robert, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by John. Any further discussion on that? Okay. All those in favor? All right. Your case is withdrawn without prejudice, and you are free to get on with your night and take what we've hopefully explained to you to heart and perhaps go back and redouble your efforts. Thank you for your patience.
We've erased the paperwork. That's all we've done tonight.
All right. The next case on our agenda, thank you for waiting patiently while we work through these, is Case 1808, 53 Harrison Street. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing in the Selectman's Meeting Room at Town Hall, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts on Wednesday, May 16th, 2018 at 7:00 PM on the application of Melanie Carlson pursuant to Mass. General laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, for a special permit under Reading zoning bylaw Section 6.3 and 7.3, or pursuant to Mass. General laws, Chapter 48, Section 10, for a variance under Reading zoning bylaw Section 6.3 and 7.4, as may be determined by the zoning board, to remove an existing garage and construct a new two-story addition with a non-conforming side yard setback on the property located at 53 Harrison Street in Reading, Massachusetts. Unless there's an objection of dispense with the reading of the abutters list, except to say that the abutters were notified, as would the appropriate boards, committees, commissions, and departments in the town of Reading, members and associate members of the zoning Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of the surrounding communities. Testimony given before the Board is taken under oath. Anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this application, including members of the public and the applicant, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn. All right. I swear that the testimony given by me before this Board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your responses I do. All right. The applicant has the floor. Before you start, Nancy, I'd like to put on the record that Nancy and I have served together on a town committee together, and that does not impact my ability or desire to be impartial as it relates to this case. I'm going to put it on the record. Thanks, Nancy.
I'm Nancy Toomey, the architect for the project, and Melanie Carlson and John Gardner are here as owners, and their builder, Dan Scott, is here as well to answer any questions. What we're requesting is a special permit under Section 6.3 and Section 7.3.2 for non-conformity charges. What they are praying to do or hope to do is to remove an existing non-conforming garage along the side and a small breezeway that connects it right down to the main house, and reconstruct a single-car garage, a tandem garage below, a first-floor expansion of living space and a second-floor additional bedroom. The property slopes, it's on 53 Harrison Street, it actually is up on a hill that overlooks Memorial Park, quite a nice location. And the current garage and driveway, a couple of things are impacting it. One is, it's a very steep slope, particularly in the winter, and it also doesn't have proper foundations below it. So anything that we needed to do to expand living space or second-floor space, we would need to remove that garage in order to accomplish it. The house was built in 1940, and it, I think, the, it currently has just two bedrooms. They haven't expanded them to children and themselves, so they would like that third bedroom on the second floor. So this plan does not make it really more non-conforming than it currently is. It's 10.1 feet from the property line. It does extend approximately 11 feet towards the front of the house and an additional 13 feet or so towards the back of the existing garage. Any additional questions? I'm more than happy to answer.
Great. Thank you, Nancy. We will go ahead and, you know what, we'll start this one with reading Glenn's before we take Board comments and questions. Glenn's memo dated May 16th, 2018, from Glenn Redman, the building inspector. Case 1808, 53 Harrison. This proposal is to remove an existing attached garage and to construct a new two-story addition 15 feet by 43.6 feet, that is 10.1 feet from the side property line. The required side yard setback is 15 feet. This property is located in an S-15 district. A variance from Section 6.3 is required. Why don't we go ahead and take some Board comments and questions, and we'll start down with, with Nick.
Well, as you know, it varied, you all heard about the variance and what's required of that, but I'll leave that aside for now. I, I like the project. I think it's a good project. In regards to extending the non-conformity, I don't see that as being any more detrimental to the neighborhood. That's all I really got to say about this right now.
Thank you, Nick. Robert?
Yeah, in this particular case, I believe we're dealing with a legal non-conforming lot, less than required frontage, existing setback is 10 feet on the, what would that be, southern side of the lot there, which is the garage, which is where I, we're talking about putting the addition that they're noting is going to require a special permit and/or variance there. Section 7.3.2 does allow a special permit with a finding that's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming building. I think certainly this case, this addition would fall into that, although it's not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I know Glenn noted in his, in his memo that he thought it required a variance on this particular case.
From the table.
Yeah. It's noted that you're supposed to have a 15-foot side yard setback there, and with the, you know, you're asking for a 10.1-foot setback on that, so...
But it's already non-conforming and we're not any closer to the side yard than we currently are. I'd have been under the impression that it's actually a special permit, not a variance.
Yeah. Now, I think we've had some discussion with this on the Board before on that, so we will probably have further discussion with that tonight. And why don't I end it right there on that.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. John?
When I looked at this and I saw that Glenn had indicated a special permit from table dimensional controls, I was kind of thrown off a little bit because I, I don't, I don't remember ever having issued a special permit on a dimensional control before, and I thought it was more, much more appropriate, and it wasn't even in, well, it was actually in his letter, that it comes under 7.3.2 because we're extending but we're not encroaching any more than, than what has been the case already. The only question I had was the, I'll start off by saying that. The only question I had was from the, from your architectural renderings and whatever, was the relative size of the addition in terms of height in comparison to the existing structure that's there now?
It wouldn't be any higher. If you look at the front, I'm trying to keep it all as a Cape-style house.
I was looking at seven, I was looking at seven, seven of 10 on your architecture.
Yeah. It looks, it looks taller because it has a door on it, but the actual height of the main peak of that addition is lower than the main peak of the existing house. So I know it's probably hard to see it. You might be able to see it. You know, it might come in the front. But this is the main peak of the house, and that's the main peak of the addition. So it looks like it is higher, but it's just the door at the front that's higher to get that additional window in the bedroom, that front bedroom.
Because when I, when I went by the house, stood there for a little while, I didn't stand, I sat the car. But when I looked at that, I, I was trying to visualize exactly where that was going to be, and now that I see that that's the ridge pole of the, of the corridor, the...
Right. And if you look at sheet eight, the side elevation, it's a little clearer in there. You can see the incline, the ridge is a little bit higher than the addition.
Okay.
It's hard with the flat drawing. I'm not skilled with three-dimensionals yet.
And consistent with what is happening in the town, we have a fair number of smaller homes who were built way back when. It wasn't that long ago, at least in my, in my age group, but intending, just as we did with the last hearing this evening, trying to improve without moving, because we know what, even if you were to sell and move to another house, it's the whole process of the move, and not that you're going to get the same thing that you have right now, and you may not like the neighborhood as well as you do right now with the park right across the street from you. So if you can do more with what you have now, that's what you're trying to accomplish, and I understand that, and I think the bylaw kind of addresses that under 7.3.2, so I don't really have any difficulties with the proposal, to tell you the truth.
Thank you, John. Eric?
I think that the correct performance standard is a special permit under 7.3.2. I wasn't sure where we were getting, you know, needing to, to get a variance from the Section 6.3 since it's already a pre-existing legal non-conforming structure, which is the whole point of 7.3. And in my opinion, I don't think that you are increasing the non-conformity and that, you know, what you're doing isn't more substantially detrimental than what's already there, so I don't have a problem with the project, and that's all I've got.
Glenn tell you why he thought you should go for variance?
I will tell you this. It was the day before he left on vacation, and he told me I needed a special permit. So I think it was just confused when he was writing the paperwork up fairly quickly, to tell you the truth. So that, that's really why it was, personally, that's how I think, because he was, we were trying to get this in to be here tonight. I don't know if he told you, Kristen, but it was the hour or a couple of hours before he left for a long vacation.
Understood. So as I'm, as I'm looking at, you know, 7.4, we would have to make a determination if, just to put the variance issue to bed for a minute. The Board would have to make a finding, I guess, or, or decide amongst ourselves that this applicant was creating a new non-conformity. And I, I don't, this is not a new non-conformity, as far as I'm concerned. So, so, and again, you know, maybe we chalk it up to, you know, Scrivener's error or, you know, some mischaracterization of it, but, but I, I think this is a prime candidate for consideration under the special permit standards of 7.3.2. And so procedurally, I guess we would need to, if, if the Board's determination is this is more proper for a special permit, we do have to dispose of in some meaningful way the part of the petition that relates to the variance, which I guess would require a withdrawal? Well, 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 presuming that this Board is inclined to grant a special permit under 7.3.2 for what you're applying for, then there would be no need for the Board to move forward and make any determination on the variance aspect of it. However, because it's in the posting and part of the application, we would want to dispose of it.
By withdrawal.
By withdrawal. Okay, all right. Just, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page procedurally. Okay.
I think that making a finding at this particular point, that, this particular point in the, in the process, making a finding that the Board felt it was more appropriate under 7.3.2... the process, making a finding that the board felt it was more appropriate under 7.3.2 than hearing the case under a variance requirement.
I'd like to hear from, I'd like to open up the public discussion. I think you're right. I think as part of perhaps our vote, we'll do it all at once. We'll open up the public comment.
Oh, yes, yes.
And then, and I think you're right. I think, you know, we can start by, or maybe even do it as part of a motion.
Yes.
We could do it a myriad of different ways to dispose of it and make it organized and put it on the record, put a finding on the record. Okay. There were so many nice, patient people who raised their hand to be sworn in, and so with that in mind, I'm going to open the matter up to any public comment. Is there any person that would like to speak on this application? When you do, if you do, please stand up, identify yourself by name and address, and we'd be happy to hear you.
My name's John Cortez. I live at 57 Harrison Street, so I'd be a butter to Melanie Carlson's house. And so, Melanie was kind enough to share the plans and go over them with me. So, I just want to say I have no objections to this construction. Most of the construction is on the other side or bogs it away from my side of the house. It's conforming on my side. It maintains the 15-foot setback, and the height of the house is the same. I spent substantial time in that home, carrying through the elderly couple that live there before Melanie bought that house, and I can attest to the fact that it's very small, very crowded, and it's really kind of needs for a growing family more space. So, I can support her petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Come on, David Mastronardi at 49 Harrison Street. I'm on the other side, the side of the nonconforming lot. And just for the record, I have a letter stating I'd support the construction, if that may be.
Sure.
And simply that, they have a growing family, and I think it's a good project.
M-A-S-T-R-O-N-A-R-D-I.
Do I?
Because I know that's how you spelled it when he said it, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's a letter from myself.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right. Anybody? Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to the application? All right, before we close the public hearing portion, we'll add to the record a letter dated May 12, 2018 from David Mastronardi, who just spoke in support. We have a letter dated April 26 from John Cortez in support of the project. We also had in the file presented to us tonight, a letter dated May 3, 2018 from a Chris and Tom McGrath of 39 Harrison Street, and seems to be in support of the application. Those are part of the record. All right. Any other questions, comments from the board? Okay. I think it probably makes sense for us to put it to a vote. So, in connection with making a finding, well, I suppose we should first start by taking a vote on the special permit aspect of the application. And chiming in if you think it's not the right thing to do, but this is how I see it. Let's vote on the special permit aspect of the application. As part of the special permit motion, we could include in the language of the motion a finding that 7.3.2 is applicable.
Right, that the project appears to be warranted under 7.3.
Right. Unless you guys want to do it differently.
Yeah.
Depending upon the outcome of that vote, if that vote is an upvote, then the next vote would be, well, the next conversation with the applicant would be, would they like to withdraw the application for a variance and then a vote on that? Better way to do it? Okay. Go ahead.
I have a question. Did the applicant even apply for a variance?
It must be noticed in the paper.
Yeah, it didn't even notice, but I don't know if it's in the application or not.
And, right, and so.
I know.
It's kind of a catch-22 where it's been published in the notice.
Yeah, yeah, would withdraw.
I mean, technically, it's not part of your application, but because it's in the public notice, and I think we want to conform with that to rule out any avenues of appeal because the decision might be defective in some procedural, technical, or nitpicky way that we ought to just belt and suspenders it and do it that way.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. With that in mind, I will entertain a motion from a board member. Anybody? Nobody?
I'll take it.
All right. Eric?
I move to approve the petition of Melanie Carlson, who seeks a special permit in accordance with Reading bylaw 6.3 and 7.3 in order to remove an existing garage and to construct a new two-story addition, 15 feet by 43.6 feet, which is 10.1 feet from the side yard property line at the property located at 53 Harrison Street, Reading, Mass. All as depicted on a certified plot plan dated April 18, 2018, prepared and stamped by John DeSelve III, professional engineer, and architectural renderings noted as Sheets 1 through 10, prepared by Twomley Design. I further move that the board make a finding that the appropriate, I don't know what to say here.
Standard review.
Yeah, the appropriate, thank you, David, standard review is a special permit pursuant to 7.3.2 rather than a variance. And we will make the special permit conditioned upon the following. The petitioner shall submit to the building inspector a certified plot plan of the proposed construction and proposed foundation plans prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. Petitioner's final construction plans for the new structure shall be submitted to the building inspector along with the as-built foundation plans prior to the issuance of a building permit. And the petitioner shall submit as-built plans to the building inspector showing the completed construction immediately after work is completed and prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
Before we call for a second, would you consider removing the, in that first line of your motion, under, you said, under 6.3 and 7.3.2? Would you consider removing the 6.3 aspect of it and pick it up on the?
I'm happy to do that. I had only included the 6.3 because that's what it was published under, and that's the relief that they actually requested in their application.
We can, we can, they kind of walk hand in hand because we're interpreting 7.3.2 under the table of dimensional controls. 6, I guess it doesn't really matter. I mean, except that it's what they've asked for.
Not necessarily what they've asked for. So, in that, in that standard, as I said, I've never, in my years, I've never had a special permit on a dimensional control, so I would, when we group those two together, I don't think they are consistent.
I'm a little nervous because that's what it says here.
It's your motion.
I feel like we're beltin', I feel more comfortable beltin' it.
Okay, okay. Then I withdraw.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Robert's second. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none will take a vote. All those in favor of the motion? None opposed? Your special permit is granted, 5.00. And hold on, because we then need to.
Withdraw.
The applicant would like to make a request to withdraw with prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, okay.
Thank you.
Just in case.
Just in case.
So, we have a request from the applicant to withdraw the variance aspect of the published notice, I guess, application. And we'll take a motion to approve the request for withdrawal without prejudice.
So, moved?
Okay. Eric? Second. Robert? Any discussion on the motion to withdraw without prejudice? Hearing none. All those in favor? 5.00, that portion of your application is withdrawn. All right. I think we go out from A to B.
I think we do.
And I will stamp your plot plan and your elevation drawings. Hold on for a minute.
Yep, sounds good.
All right? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought you were a neighbor.
Try to belt and suspenders it when you write it up?
Yes.
I mean, just because.
I understand.
You're the attorney.
I know. Get it out with plenty of time for board comments.
No, 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 no. Oh, no, no, no. You're worried.
You've got nothing else to do but write decisions. Hope you have some extra spare time, I know.
I think this one in particular, you know, board comments would be appropriate enough.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right, I'm going to put those in the file.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. All right, we have a couple of sets of minutes. I don't know if anybody or everybody's had a chance to look at them. That's the 40B.
Right. I'm Bill Conner.
Anybody?
March 29.
29, anything?
Yeah, I missed it.
You don't have them?
I snuck them.
Which one would you like, John?
29.
You can get one in the packet tonight.
Ah, which I didn't get to read, I guess. Okay. I looked at the ups.
Yeah, I got one here. You want it? While he's doing that, want to go to the April 18 minutes? Kristen, just, I got a couple, you know, I'll draw and read through that. Page three, third paragraph down, paragraph that starts Mr. Redfern questioned. Town council is SEH.
Can I ask a question? That first house that we discussed, what number was that?
On Sound.
On Sound Street?
119.
119.
119.
119.
Kristen, on the, I'm sorry, the, yeah, April 18, page five, last paragraph, second sentence, I believe Mr. Redfern mentions clear with the bylaw where a crosstalk can be allowed if there is no new nonconforming. I believe you knew nonconforming. A crosstalk, you agree? It makes sense, okay. I believe that's what we were getting at with the discussion. And that's all I had on that one.
On page four, Kristen, about those sets of minutes, you see here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, six paragraphs down, it starts with Mr. Hagstrom stated he really liked the. he really liked the project.
Uh huh.
Aside from catching my clear enthusiasm with your punchy prose, the last sentence, he stated that this is where he is at initially, rather than, he stated that is where is at initially. I just need to throw the pronoun in there.
Good? All right. Motion to approve the minutes of March 29, 2018. Second? Robert, all those in favor? Motion to approve the minutes of April 18, 2018, as amended. So moved by Robert, second?
Second.
By Eric, all those in favor? Minutes are approved. Anything anybody want to talk about?
Yes. I spoke with Jean Delios today, actually yesterday, just in reference to what has been happening on the 40B. And there was a meeting between the development team and the neighbors, Boriano, being one of the individuals present. And the development team rolled out a new proposal to the people who are present, which I, I'm not sure who was present, I'm not going to get into that, I just want to give you a quick synopsis, in that there is a substantial change in the proposal that's being made. I asked Jean if she would get in touch with Jesse and Ted so that we would have, we, the board, would have access to those proposals ASAP, because as the board had mentioned that evening the last time we met, which was on May 2nd, 4th? Second, I think it was, May 2nd. The board had indicated that since transparency was a key term being used, that transparency needs to extend to the board as well, since it was this board who had to make the final decision on the project, and we need to know that in advance, not the, not the night off nor the week prior to the night off. So that, I don't know, unless Andrew can give us a, I don't have an update whether that has been transmitted in digital format so that it can be brought up. I asked for it to be given to the board, not in a large form, but at least in the eight, eight and a half by 14 format, so that we could see what was being done. Unless you wanted to add something in addition to that, Andrew?
So they just haven't sent us official plans yet. What they presented at the meeting was quick renderings of what is now being proposed. So they're working on getting the full scale, everything finalized, done. We gave them the deadline of June 28 to submit everything, so they still said that that is still their goal and should definitely be possible. But we should, I'm expecting probably sooner than that, so as soon as we get them, we will certainly send them out to you guys.
Well, I was very adamant about the board getting at least the unofficial...
Okay.
...proposal that was rolled out so we can see what's happening.
Okay.
And you can tell me that it appears that the fund has been, the account has been funded, and we can, we will be moving forward on the traffic here?
Right, correct. They had some concerns with the price, I believe, but it's being settled or has been settled, so the peer review is underway.
Okay. Now, I understand it was, it's going to be tomorrow?
For...
For one of the dates, and the other date was going to be the Saturday?
Right, I believe so. So their traffic engineer has also been in contact with the peer reviewers to review tomorrow and Saturday, I believe you're correct.
And that will be on, what's the term? It'll be visual, actual visual accounts taken...
Right, it'll be data.
Rather than data taken from state studies.
Own traffic accounts.
That's all I have to report. I haven't even seen it.
Yeah.
I did tell, I did express to Jean the, the board's concern that the workshops that they're having is fine, and, and that's great, transparency is there. But the reality is that this board needs to know since they're making the final decision.
Okay.
And we don't want to be on the outside looking in...
Right.
As we move down, because there are other peer evaluations that have to be made.
Okay, I'll email Jesse and see if I can get basically what I have here, same type of renderings, so, and see if they can at least forward us those, since I know they have them, so...
Yes, ASAP is possible.
Right, okay.
It's, you know, as Andrew says, too, anything we get is, it's not an official submittal.
Right.
This is kind of, the way they talked about it, I believe the applicant did, was, they were going to have another workshop meeting, as you said, and there may be subsequent meetings after that even. So it's, it's a work in progress, this whole thing, until I think there is a second official submittal.
Right.
Yeah, I think there is, and I, I talked to Jean about this too. I think in terminology, if you want to look at definitions, there's a difference between a workshop and a negotiation. The workshop is one thing. The only people in negotiations are the board, representation, and staff members.
Okay.
It is not the neighborhood.
Right.
Because that, that final decision is going to come down there.
Right.
And, and, in deference to Jean, she was very much in tune with that, too, so...
I would certainly agree 100%.
That's all I had to do on my report.
Okay. Nothing else necessarily to share, so we'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Okay. Before we do, I'll, I'll just note that, no, that's all right. I'll, I'll just note, if there's any, any news, I'll just note that I'm going to be going in next week for an interview to extend my stay on the board for another three years.
Great. Mine is, mine is put off until at least, I think, the end of May. But I did indicate a desire to return to the board if I can.
Okay. I'll, yeah, go ahead, somebody made a motion to...
All right, so remake the motion, we had a draw, so you could talk about it. Okay. So moved?
So moved.
John, second?
Second.
Robert, all those in favor? 500, we're adjourned.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.